We have this report, hopefully you all see it. So, questions? Feel free to ask questions. We'll go from there.
Okay, so, hopefully y'all can see this. You have a little better opportunity to see where we're at from a budget perspective and where we are as we get to approval budgets. That's what we got here in very short order as we go down through here. So, if you have any questions, this is a public hearing, so it's obvious your opportunity to speak up and ask questions in reference to where we are and what we're doing. Then Robin will help us with that, I'm sure.
Can you zoom that up a little bit better so people in the back can see it better?
You can't.
Come on, let's get these seats.
Yeah, I was gonna say this.
The main seat's there.
Do you have any paper copies to rush to with that?
You can have mine.
We have mine, too.
Is that any better?
It's okay.
That's a lot better.
So, I'll scroll down through this so you can just get a quick look. Bobby, what?
If you strategize expenditures on this page, it could be safe there. So, you're just about to, I mean, sort of looks like every year's. Any, when, when you need to get, they said, or, how long is that? They're right there.
There you go.
They're all categorized.
You have a pretty good idea of where we are, so revenue is about a short expenditure for, and then down here you can see, obviously, the urban world. Anything you want to add on?
That's exactly what it goes on the mail. No website in your office.
Right.
No website.
Yeah. Yeah, it's on the website.
It must be an old version of the website, the numbers are just...
Maybe it goes back to our opportunity to suggest for somebody to get that correct. Sorry, again, I can't see where we're at, a couple of dollars back, we've got the name, a couple of previous, but, um...
The debt service. The very top, those who live.
Are you working out this one kind of bottom?
The very top, the general, there's special revenues. This is your revenue and other financing sources. It's pretty separate, so, and if one is approved today, I'd be more than happy to turn out a copy and give it to anybody who has it.
So, total revenue of other sources, you can see the dollars there.
In those certain...
Just to give you kind of an idea of the number of categories, especially when you're starting to manage yourself, really the transportation, government sources. Your fund balancing budgets, beginning in the East. And again, as Kelly said, you can see some of this if you look online.
And there's the duties as well. It's not like, that hasn't changed at all, so it's the same.
And this is our basic budget, is it four seven three? That was mandated to us by state.
Same last year, yeah.
So, that's not something we had a choice in making, it was mandated. So, again, four point seven three, four thousand.
You didn't know that. There was no proof, so we didn't have to do.
We did more. We did minimal proof, yes, or less than two point nine million. Then, gross match rate is... Okay. And then these are the salaries of the elected officials, and then the newspapers that we publish in. So, you all get a few of that as well.
Will we have to allow to study?
Yes, it was, it was a typo because mine, because...
I actually found it once, though, but...
I didn't put her back on today on the website. I'll make sure that it's back on the website together after this meeting.
So, the numbers that we're seeing here now are reflective of the salary budget increase for individuals elected for twenty-five percent.
Yeah, and it had everybody's, I had you guys apply on the, the...
Right.
That, that was strange, but I didn't have to change anything on the supervisors.
Right, that should've been, right.
Yeah. It had something to do with like, you know, when we did our first hearing, right? Well, then they were deciding, they didn't know exactly how they wanted to put some of the elected officials. Some of the department heads and elected officials, they were thinking about doing a different percent than what it was. And that's what you guys see. So, then I put it back to only the five percent on most of us elected officials, including the county attorney, except for the sheriff's department. The sheriff's department was for sure typo because we were making a fact to make sure that's exactly what his salary was. But that would be put back on if it's...
Any questions in reference to where we're at here with the county officials and pay grades and overall dollar? This is what your tax dollars are paying for. Yeah, that'd be best. The information that you see here. So, one of the things that we'll do today is talk about a resolution to approve the overall budget, and then there's a resolution to look at appropriating those dollars, correct?
Appropriations on what each department...
Right. Okay. The other input or questions or concerns from the audience?
Is this with the increase that you talked about for the employees? And that was how much of a percentage?
Five percent.
Five percent.
For the general group of folks, ten percent for the sheriff, so he was the exception because he felt, though, in his category as compared to his peers throughout the state, as well as the fact that he has the largest number of employees that he supervises and the second largest budget in the county. So, that was the justification for giving him a ten percent increase.
Thank you.
Do you, other questions?
So, I've got a quick question. What's the, what is the expectation for the supervisors with hours of work? If you officially meet once a week, but I know you have other meetings and subcommittees and stuff, they can go to forty-five thousand dollars a year for meeting once a week officially? I'm just curious, what's the expectation from your point of view for hours a week? On average?
My own expectations for the meetings that I'm assigned to is my own personal expectations. I go to those meetings, sit in on those meetings, take part in those meetings, as well as whatever is behind the sun, behind the scenes things, as well as the county, you know, obviously the, the, the meeting time here.
So, I realize those hours are undocumented.
Those hours vary with, you know, how long other subcommittee meetings last and everything like that, too, so...
So, a good question, Brad. I think to answer your question from my perspective, so this job is really a permanent part-time job, okay? So, the expectation legally, I think, description is a minimum of twenty hours a week. My personal experience to chat, everyone probably saying the same thing, you know, I'm on working there, obviously, but I'm spending somewhere in the neighborhood about forty-five hours a week doing work here, as well as on the computer, and then attending those meetings that I'm assigned to through the county. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, just kind of like if you're thinking roughly twenty hours of official meetings and then unofficial behind-the-scenes work, that I realize all of you have to do, so you're evaluating your job at about ninety thousand a year on a forty-hour a week job or full-time?
If, if it were a full-time, yes. But if, yeah. But we're not being paid at that level, so, no. We're absorbing more, more duties and stay on the same day, basically.
Did you get insurance that time?
I do, I do.
Is it offered?
I have chosen not to take that.
But it is offered.
It is.
Okay.
I do take insurance.
I take insurance, but to answer that question also, Brian, it's twenty-four seven. I look at it because there's a lot of mornings, two, three o'clock in the morning, I'm up, and I go back to sleep because I'm considering what's happening within the county. So, it's not just coming in, come to that meeting. Yesterday I had a meeting, took my better part of the afternoon, and that was it, so...
No, I recognize that, and I, I realize there's a lot of things, too, whereas someone is a community might come up and say, "Oh, hey, Mark, I want to talk about this," and then that's something I get all the time. I'm just curious, from your perspective of what was the job going to be, that's, that's all.
I'm certain, I don't care. I, I do take the insurance now. The first thirty-six months of my time with the county of Board Supervisor, I had the good fortune to have a whole bank of sick leave tied bill with the state, and, well, I'm, I'm going to explain it because you might, others might not. I was able to utilize that, continue the utilization of what they call the SLIP program. So, it essentially saved the state about sixty-three thousand dollars by using the state insurance and not the county. So, it was a no-brainer, you know? I've used the state until that ran out, then I come off for accounting insurance.
Mark, I, I think all of us wake up in the night sometimes and think about work, though, so...
It's good, your conscience is...
I don't, well, I get to count those hours moving forward.
Any other questions? Big conversation. Well, yes, Bob.
Yeah, you know, I've got a little concern here looking at the annual salaries, and I appreciate each week when I come to your meetings, we get reports from Jake, we get reports from Cam, we get reports from Katie, all the rest of them, and the only one we never ever get a report out of is the county attorney's office. I noticed the sheriff is going to be raised a hundred and thirteen thousand, plus some change, and the job he does and the number of people he manages, I think we had a gentleman here three or four weeks ago that his actual salary too been closer to a hundred and eighty thousand to be in line with all the rest of the counties, State of Iowa. Why are, why are we paying the county attorney who's over one, two, three, four, maybe five people? This has excessive amounts, and I think the caseload, we never hear about the caseload. We never hear about any of the plea bargains. We never hear anything that's been dropped, charges, so-and-so. It just seems a little strange to me. Just my question.
Okay, I can answer part of your question. Part of that question goes back to, as we look at the salaries, we look at what their peers were paying throughout the other counties. So, it's ISAC, yeah, well, State Association of Counties gives us a survey so that we can look and see what peer groups are paid. So, most of our folks are in mid-range at, at this level right now today. And to answer your question, the reason this sheriff got a ten percent increase because he was at sixty-seventh out of ninety-nine, so he was in the bottom third, so we got a ten percent raise to help bring him up. Still below where he's at, but the compensation board's got a cap of ten percent. So, we, we followed the compensation board's recommendation to keep us within that range, but hopefully to increase him to a level that is more appropriate for his peers. So, hopefully, that answers a little bit your question. Mr. Steader, any comments? Okay. I, I'll address the elephant in the room just a little bit. We've had some conversation through the county attorney's office on where they're at with the budget. I have a little concern on the budget perspective and where they want to go with that. Darren, you sent some information yesterday. I, I understand the numbers, but not fully in agreement with where you are on compensation for your group of individuals, so we can address that today, we can address that at some other point, but...
Let's address it right now, what's your concerns?
My, my concerns are the salary increases that you're proposing for people in your office. You're losing one person, and you're increasing the overall allocation and appropriation of dollars by one percent, and you're still losing one person. So, the dollars don't seem to match what you're...
I've never seen those numbers pictured. I understand you didn't have budget with that, the budget that I gave you in January, this last month, last year.
With the numbers that you gave us in January, your budget went down four percent, okay? With what you had given us. However, that does not include the five percent that you anticipate giving of your employees.
Well, that's the five percent if everyone's getting in the county. Single being out for saying, "I'm raising my budget one percent." What am I actually doing? I'm lowering my budget four percent.
You are not. And the big...
I, you are, you are giving everyone five percent. If that does mean over the one percent of what I was giving last year, how, how much does everybody else, what are all the other budgets raising this year?
These are your numbers. Okay.
This is your own?
Yeah. Okay, you are proposing to raise Ms. Rose's salary by twenty-one and a half percent. After that raise, you're proposing...
I have a statement to read about that, yeah.
You're proposing a five percent on top of that.
Because I'm not proposing anything. You are giving it to everyone in the county. May I read the statement that I sent to you yesterday? It's just so everybody, I, I think everybody needs to, it's their opportunity. So, as they know, everybody else probably doesn't know, my office manager is retiring from this. And instead of asking to have her replaced, and she's been my office manager since I took over nineteen years ago, her salary is about sixty-six thousand dollars. Instead of asking to have her replaced for my twenty-five, twenty-six budget, I removed half of her salary, thirty-three thousand, because she's going, you know, for July to December, she could be working that, she'll be gone January first, so I took out that thirty-three thousand. Her duties are going to have to be absorbed by my office. Mr. Dietrich, do you know what her main duties are?
I, I do not, no.
Do you know what her, do you know what her, what's a, what's the charging document called that my office has to file to get anything, any indictable misdemeanor filed in this county?
Unfortunately, Mr. Steader, we really don't know much about your office because you don't provide any information.
You're, you're setting my budget without knowing anything about my office. It's called trial formation, we talked about it in January. How long do I have to file a trial formation after someone's arrested?
I don't know.
You don't?
I don't provide any information.
You don't, right? So, do you provide any information to us?
You did, you were, I worked that employee, so you didn't...
I've got it, employee script right here, yeah.
So, her salary is sixty-six thousand, I didn't mention that because apparently you filled yours out.
That was a quite old title.
Uh-huh, and I'm not sure who filled this one out. Looks like Mr. Steader's writing for Ms. Ferguson. Because this matches yours.
That is mine. Do not make presumptions.
I'm not making a presumption, I'm just saying...
I don't believe you did make presumptions.
I'm going to continue with my statement, Mr. Dietrich.
We are not going to dramatize this.
Dramatize what?
This meeting.
I'm not sure what you're referencing.
All right, if I may, I, I remove half of her salary, if I may, thirty-three thousand.
No, I'm, excuse me, Ms. Ferguson made a comment. Okay. What dramatization are you talking about?
Insinuating that he filled out and I paid the work.
I'm just asking a question.
Why would you think that he filled out and I paid the work?
Because when I look at it, it just looks the same from a writing aspect.
Is it because I live with him?
Do you live with him? I don't know that.
Indeed, I do.
Okay.
I don't know. You're dramatizing the situation.
And we, let's, let's continue on with our discussion, and this is not relevant right now to what we're talking, in our budget, please, Steve?
So, you're saying...
Steve, please. Can we go on, please, Darren?
Okay. To continue, I remove half of her salary, which is thirty-three thousand. I'm only budgeting, and that, to budget, to absorb her duties, I only budgeted twenty-four percent of that, which is sixteen thousand dollars, to be used to pay my remaining employees to do her duty. These trial formations are the lifeblood of a prosecutor's office. No indictable misdemeanor, indictable charge, don't get filed by county without that document. It's very complicated, it takes a long time to do, it's a specialized thing, it has to be done. This isn't a point where I can drop an employee and just say, "Well, we're going to cut our hours a little bit, or we're not going to take this many appointments this week." This is stuff that just has to get done. So, I believe that that salary restructuring is more than reasonable. I could make a very valid argument that I either keep the entire sixty-six in because that job is going away, or I can go hire a replacement to do her job. This job has to get dealt with. So, I want to break down the numbers that I proposed. So, her full pay is sixty-six thousand, so half a year, thirty-three thousand. My proposal is to have the rest of my staff absorb that for a total amongst themselves of sixteen thousand dollars for the year. So, if you do the first half where my office manager is still there, while my other staff is starting to absorb her salary, you'll have her thirty-three thousand plus half of sixteen, which is eight, so you're paying forty-one thousand dollars for that job for the first, for the last half of this year, the first half of the next budget year. When Tammy leaves, her thirty-three drops off, the only eight thousand remains for the rest of my staff. So, for that other six months, they're doing thirty-three thousand dollars of work for eight thousand dollars. So, the total I propose for the sixty-six thousand dollar job is forty-nine thousand dollars, that's seventeen thousand dollars less than that job was being done for before. That's the budget decrease. It's been suggested at a certain point that, that restructuring not take place either at all or not until January, but if that restructuring doesn't take place until January, then my staff is doing that job, absorbing that job for free during the first six months and only getting paid eight thousand dollars for the rest of it. I don't, I don't believe that's fair. I'm already asking them to take on extra work at a discounted rate for the county. I think I'm asking about the most I can possibly ask of them. I have some numbers that I had proposed, which is in the restructuring, that is a four percent decrease in my sal, in my budget from last year. As I mentioned to the supervisors, I'm trying very hard to be a team player. This is the second year in a row I voluntarily decreased my budget. I can decrease it again next year if I get some cooperation from the supervisors to pay my employees fairly. They do vital work, county is already getting a good bargain. It just, as, as a comparison, there's two administrative staff at the sheriff's office that do similar work, let's say, let's call them administrative assistants for lack of a better term. So, the two comparable at the sheriff's office, between the two of them are getting paid one hundred and twenty-two thousand, nine hundred and forty-five hour. With the restructuring numbers that I have, Ms. Ferguson and Ms. Rose will be making cumulatively one hundred and eighteen thousand, nine hundred and sixty-six, so still four thousand less than what the sheriff's employees are getting. If you don't restructure, that number goes up, I think they're getting paid sixteen thousand five hundred something less than comparable employees at sheriff's office. We, we talked about this, I was brought to your office a few weeks ago, Mr. Dietrich, because these numbers for some reason weren't being understood, and I thought I was making a pretty innocuous comment when I said, "I think we can all agree that people should get paid for the work they do." Do you remember what you told me? You said, "Not necessarily." You were suggesting that they do extra work for no pay. I find that to be very hard to swallow. So, that's why I'm asking for this restructuring money, not raises. They're doing more actual work for less money to the county that was being paid for. That's what I'm asking for. Those are the numbers that I'm asking for.
We're still in a public hearing?
Sure.
Mr. Dietrich, you have a comment?
Yeah. Most of you don't know it or not aware of it. I have an utility board in New London, and in our handbook for employees, we have a nepotism clause. What does bottom line for the county's handbook of nepotism, how you deal with it? I've never seen a copy of the handbook. And my other question, we talk about treating people fairly, but on your sheet there that you talked about earlier, one of your employees gets twenty-six percent, twenty-six and a half percent increase wages, and the other one gets eight and a half? How's that fair? In your budget?
It's a question to me, that's, that's work being distributed, because she's taking on that much extra work.
Doing that much more work than what the other employee is.
Yes, the distrib, distribution isn't even across my office, I'm having people do specialized work.
Okay. While we're on the subject, I got one final question. It's been a bird in my butt ever since I heard about it. You know, I was on reserves for twenty-nine years. Mr. Steader, you was aware of that?
This has something to do with budget, Mr. Dietrich?
It does, it does. It will allude to it. You know, twenty-nine years, I never had a charge dropped or dismissed or plea bargained And I've heard a lot of reports of stuff being dropped, and I admit, I don't think your caseload is actually that heavy. And that's reludes back to your budget. You know, that's a real slap in the face for anybody that's ever been involved, but I yield respect to them.
Any other comments or question, maybe your comments, the questions about a budget? If not, I'll entertain a motion to go out of public hearing. Do you have a motion to go out? We have a motion. Is there a second? I'll second it. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We are now out of, uh, public hearing. We have a report, a resolution to certify the Henry County budget for the fiscal year twenty-six. Resolution twelve dash twenty-two five, approval of the fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six budget and certification of taxes. Whereas, the Henry County Board of Supervisors has considered the proposed fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six, uh, county budget and certification of taxes. And whereas a public hearing asserting this proposed budget was held on April tenth, twenty-twenty-five, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Supervisors of Henry County as the county budget and certification of taxes as of fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six is set forth in the budget summary. Is hereby adopted and that the Henry County auditor is directed to file this budget and establish according records in accordance with the attached schedule. And that is the paper that we have, and we handed all, handed a couple of them out. Be therefore resolved that the chairman and the county auditor be hereby authorized to sign the appropriate and to approve twenty-five, twenty-six budget for the county budget, signed on this date, the tenth day of April, twenty-twenty-five. Is there a motion to approve this resolution?
I'll move that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Is there a second? Discussion?
The discussion I want to have is that I, I will approve the budget, but when we get the appropriations, I have some reservations.
All right, we have a motion and a second. No other discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none. Oh, yes, you, excuse me, you are correct, I'm here, Robin.
Dietrich?
Aye.
Lenny?
Aye. Thank you for helping me out there. Next thing on our agenda is the, uh, resolution for the Henry County appropriations for fiscal year twenty-six. Resolution thirteen twenty-five, twenty-twenty-five, as it is desired to make appropriation for each of the different officers and departments of the fiscal, fiscal year beginning July one, twenty-twenty-five, in accordance with the section three, three, one, twenty-four, three, four, subsection six, Code of Iowa. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Supervisors of Henry County, as follows. Section one, the amounts of itemized departments in this bill are hereby appropriated for the resources for each department, so summarized as shown. Bear with me on this, please. Non-departmental, department staff, one million, eighty-eight thousand, five hundred, forty-two thousand. Supervisor, two hundred and fifty thousand, three hundred, thirty-two dollars. Auditor, four hundred and eighty-seven thousand... Auditor, four hundred and eighty-seven thousand, two hundred and ninety. County attorney, six hundred and seventy-six thousand, one hundred and forty-five. Oh, excuse me, that was the trader, oh, that one, excuse me. County trader, six hundred and seventy-six, one forty-five. County attorney, six hundred and ninety-nine thousand, eight hundred and ten. The sheriff, four million, six hundred and fifty-four thousand, three hundred and twenty-four. Planning and zoning, one hundred and thirty-nine thousand, two hundred and twelve. Recorder, three hundred and seventy-four thousand, six hundred and sixteen. General assistance, eight twenty-eight thousand, seven hundred and seventy-three. Engineer, seven million, four hundred and ten thousand, six hundred and eighty-two. Veterans affair, one hundred and one thousand, nine hundred and ninety-one. Conservation, five hundred and ninety thousand, nine hundred and forty-two. Board of health, nine hundred and ninety thousand, eight hundred and fifty-four. Environmental health, one hundred and one thousand, nine hundred and forty-five. Human services, forty-five, forty thousand, five hundred. Medical examiner, eighty-one thousand, seven hundred. District court, twelve thousand, eight hundred. County libraries, thirty-four thousand, five hundred and thirty. Courthouse, one hundred and eight, one hundred and fifty-eight thousand, nine hundred and fifty-eight. Data processing, six hundred and ninety-seven thousand, one hundred and seventy-two dollars. Mental health, twenty-three thousand, two hundred and forty-five dollars. Usual probation, two hundred and twenty thousand, eight hundred and fifty. County far, one thousand, five hundred. Non-departmental, three hundred million, three hundred and fifty-one thousand, four hundred and sixty-two. For a total of twenty-four million, forty-seven thousand dollars, five hundred and sixty-two. Before we go along, did I say the law correctly?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Subject, section two, subject to the provisions of the county, other county procedures and regulations and applicable state law, the appropriations authorized under section one shall constitute the authorization for the department or, or the officers listed to make the expenditures in accordance with the obligation from their department budget effective July one, twenty-twenty-five. Section three, in accordance with the section three-three-one, point four-three-seven, I am code, non-departmental or officer shall expend or contract to spend any money or incur any liability, liability to add into any contract shall be as the items involved in the expenditures of money for the purpose of excess of the amount, of the amounts appropriated pursuant to this resolution. Section four, if any time during the twenty-four, twenty-five budget, is that correct, rather, it should be twenty-four, twenty?
It should be twenty-five, twenty.
Twenty-five, twenty-six budget also type of budget year, the auditor shall ascertain and available resources for the budget that year and shall be, and for that year will be less than said. Uh, budget of the total appropriations he or she shall make immediate, uh, sell information to the board of, board recommending, recommending appropriate corrective actions. Section five, the auditor, the auditor shall establish this, uh, separate account for appropriations authorized in section one. Each of such account, each of which accounts shall be, uh, in, in each amount of appropriations for the amount charged thereto and the unencumbered balances. The auditor shall report this statu, statute, uh, the status of such accounts to applicable departments and the officers during the twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six budget year. Section six, all appropriations authorization pursuant to this resolutions lapse at the close of business, June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-six. Is there a motion to approve this resolution?
With the... The motion.
We have a motion. Is there a second? I will second it. Discussion?
My discussion goes back to where we have to get appropriations for a couple of the departments. So we've got a resolution for that. I'm not gonna vote yes. We have a question.
Man?
Darren, with the, the change in salaries and the structure of your office and everything, I get that Nicole's gonna be picking up the trial information and putting that together and everything like that. Uh, I think I would ignore. Uh, she, you had, out of that sixteen thousand dollar total, she was gonna absorb ten thousand dollars of it as well as the majority of Tammy's duties.
Yeah, for the, for, for, very significant, very important part of, yeah.
And I'm absorbing some of her duties because she's taking on Tammy's.
Right.
So it's, it's shuffle our duties will be basically equal, therefore the salaries are basically equal.
This is basically the same thing that I did years ago when I had a person then restructured and gave Tammy and then a five thousand dollar restructure salary, same thing, exactly the same.
We're also expecting attorneys to take on some extra duties and...
Yeah. And then they would, they would have more, take on two thousand dollars extra for their added duties.
Right, Tammy used to attend a lot of the county meetings. See if we're doing that now.
And, and I just, I'm not taking on any extra.
Right.
No, that's her raise, still aren't. I, I see that you have, you forgot to use a, for, for that area.
With comments said and everything, I, I'm gonna ask in the future, is there any way that you could put together a high level explanation of, of what's going on in the county as far as how it relates to the charges filed? Uh, obviously you can't put the identifiers and that type of stuff in, but a high level of things so the public can see what is actually being done through the law enforcement, getting channeled into the court system. Is there a, a real basic report that you could share with at like a department head meeting?
I'm not sure exactly what you're asking. Please feel free to stop over, we'll sit down, you can write out what you want. Us, you, just tell me what you want. I can do it. I don't know how valuable it's going to be or what it's really going to reflect, but I'm perfect, I'm perfectly willing to do that. Just stop over sometime and let me know what you want.
I, I think it would, I think it would dampen the burning embers if, if there was a little bit of information received and, and public information.
That'd be fun. That'd be good, thank you.
And along with that, I, I do agree if, if there's added duties being absorbed by other people, I guess I, I love the thought, there needs to be some compensation, but we need to have a measure of, of what all the thing done, you know? And that, that rolls back to my last comment there about the, the general high level report, so I, I think that would be helpful.
Any other discussion? If not, I'll call for the rule of thumb.
Dietrich?
No.
Lenny?
Yes.
Yes.
Resolution passes. Next thing on our agenda is a motion to improve the way, to increase the wages for Henry County employees as the following, five percent for all elected officials, all department heads and non-elected employees, uh, all of the, for all of Henry County, including a five percent for the assessors, per the conference board recommendation, except for the Henry County Sheriff, which will receive a ten percent increase. Is there a motion to approve?
I make a motion.
Is there a second? A second.
Shouldn't that be extended? Are you giving?
Extended.
Uh, attorney, yeah.
Five percent.
He's under the elected officials, yeah, and all, all those, all of the departmental people.
There be a, uh, minor correction on the blankage, I think that's the correction.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay. I've lost place here. I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none. Next thing on our agenda is, uh, a proclamation for Sexual Assault Awareness Month. I mean, this is presented this year. Could they like to come forward and, uh, give a presentation for this? Go ahead.
Um, I'm Rachel Wong. I'm a sexual advocate for the morning Henry County. Um, we're here to support, um, Sexual Assault Awareness Month. Um, back in October, DVIP and RVAP combined, and are now a more organization. So we went with that reorganization. We, they went with, they want, we, I live in the counties that we represent. So I live outside of Burlington. Um, so we have a twenty-four hour crisis line. We are there to respond within twenty-four hours of being called. So whether that be just a phone call, whether that be called to a forensic exam at the hospital, and then we follow them, survivors, all the way from the original call, all the way through court proceedings, all the way to whatever they need. So we meet them where they're at. Um, so, and I haven't met a lot of you guys yet, but, um, we're hoping to, you know, to get a little, I mean, nobody wants to do it, but we want to get some, our word out in Henry County. Since I've been here, I have not had any survivors call me from Henry County. We know they're out there. We just want to get word to them that we're here and we're there to support them. And, uh, give me some pressure. We are having shop for survivors at Hy-Vee here on, um, the sixteenth from three-thirty to six-thirty. We're all, you're all welcome to come out and, um, we're looking forward to being in your community and serving your community.
What day was it?
The sixteenth.
From three-thirty to six-thirty?
I was just gonna give you, since we've taken over, we took over October first, we have had served fifty-eight, um, clients. We had forty-seven new since October, and we've given them six hundred and seven services. So we just want to really make sure people in your county are aware that we're here and we're working or responding to them calls and whether it's, like I said, helping a police officer, helping the attorney's office, we're just here to help your county.
And this is very well correct?
Yep.
I think the, one thing that may help us, and Darren, I think you can inject in that as well, that maybe if we could give out notifications maybe in March, so we give the full month of pre-purview to this whole situation would probably help a little bit. These don't really concern us, but we're happy to, yeah, you know, post to who member we can, but yeah, true, but understood, yeah. We know that, right?
Oh, I think it's usually, they're like, they're like, specific cases, so maybe to get information, but since the information changed, then we have, I have, I have some, yeah.
The month's pre-dupendent services, the month actually.
That's what, work together and make sure that, yeah.
He has three months, so we're already in the tent, so that's what, it'd be nice to be able to get that.
Well, we're gonna work on it with being new to this county, being new with the merge. This is our first Sexual Assault Awareness Month, so hopefully next year will be a little, a lot more in the community to do some stuff. This year was kind of a, like I said, we just took over as a dual agency in October. So just kind of getting, next year we plan to be planning ahead of time.
Proactively.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
With the program asking us to, uh, make a resol, or a proclamation for the month of April, two thousand twenty-five, I'm gonna read the proclamation here. Whereas sexual abuse, sexual violence and stalking affect anyone, including children, causing long-term physical, psychological and emotional harm. And whereas every sixty-eight seconds, an American is sexually assaulted, and every nine minutes, that victim is a child. Whereas approximately seventy percent of people affected by rape or sexual assault experience moderate to severe distress, a larger percentage than for any other violent crime. Whereas sexual violence in rural communities exist as a hidden, silent and often under-recognized crime that is often under-reported, it's widespread and affects every community member. And whereas through the inspiration, courage and resilience of people affected by sexual violence, our communities are learning to better respond to the life-changing impact of sexual violence on individuals through systems and in the community. And whereas DVIP and RVAP has worked to end violence and abuse for more than forty-five years through the collaborative partnership of staff, volunteers, local municipalities, criminal justice, health and human services, faith communities, business leaders and private citizens. And whereas our community achievements should be re, should be commended, excuse me. And we must continue our commitment to respect and support those affected by sexual violence and to prevent future violence in our communities. Now therefore be it resolved that we, Henry County Iowa, do hereby proclaim the month of April, two thousand twenty-five to be Sexual Assault Awareness Month in Henry County Iowa and urge all people to work together to eliminate sexual violence, sexual abuse and stalking from our community. Signing this tenth day of April, two thousand twenty-five, Henry County Iowa.
Motion, do you approve this proclamation?
Make a motion.
Is there a second?
That's your second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those in, thank you. Thank you for your work, your review. Next on our agenda is, uh, Child Abuse Prevention Month proclamation, and we have some advocates here. So Aaron, you're gonna take charge of this one here?
Uh, so I'm Erin Jones. Um, I work at the Henry County Extension Office in community-based child abuse prevention. Um, I serve four counties. And we work in a, CPVC, our community partnerships for protecting children. We have some lovely supporters and council members and advocates and, um, people that are serving the community all the time on Child Abuse Prevention, although that's what all of us are doing in some way or another for, um, doing good work. So, um, yeah, I just wanted, uh, we, April's nationally is Child Abuse Prevention Month. If you see the blue pinwheels around, that's the national symbol for child abuse prevention. And, um, appreciate the, um, board taking the time to, um, last of the year for the proclamation.
Before we go on, I'd just like to interject some of the things that Erin does. A lot, a lot of people don't understand, she is an advocate for, how many different groups have come to your stakeholders meeting? Plus twenty sometimes they've been to, is that more?
Yeah, we'll have, you know, fifteen, and we've had up to, lately we've had up to twenty-five was our highest.
So she's worked as coordinator to bring all of these entities together to collaborate, collaborate and, uh, help you children out in the prevention and help and protect children and anything that has to do with children in Henry County. And actually, we're doing it for a four county area, so. Should, in part of her fund, comes from, uh, money that, on the board that I sent, which is called DCAT, Decaturization of HHS Products. And so that's how she funded to that, uh, program.
Funds, yes. Thanks, Darren.
Are you dead in call?
Yes.
With that said, I'm, uh, gonna read the Child Abuse Prevention Month proclamation dated April tenth, two thousand twenty-five. Whereas prevention is possible with the right policies and investments, families... Whereas prevention is possible, with the right policies and investments, families and children can thrive and avoid contact with child welfare and other costly systems, and whereas the early experiences of a child impact them throughout life, both positively and negatively, and whereas every family and child is filled with tremendous promise, and we have a collective responsibility to prevent adverse childhood experiences, foster and foster the potential of every child and promote positive childhood experiences, and whereas positive childhood experiences, acronym PCEs, such as loving caregiving, safe and stable nurturing relationships, play a vital role in helping children thrive by mitigating trauma and the negative impact of adverse childhood experiences, ACEs, and whereas families who receive the support they need before a crisis occurs are better equipped to provide safe, healthy, and nurturing environments, leading to children who are safer, healthier, and more hopeful about their futures, and whereas childhood trauma, including abuse and neglect, can have long-term psychological, emotional, and physical effects throughout an individual's lifetime and impact future generations, and whereas primary prevention of child abuse and neglect can reduce the lifetime economic burden associated with child maltreatment, and whereas strengthening families through access to concrete economic, social, and community-based support reduce the likelihood of abuse and neglect and ensure children have the foundation for lifelong well-being, and whereas effective child abuse prevention activities succeed because of the partnership created between child welfare professionals, education, health, community, and faith-based organizations, businesses, law enforcement agencies, and families, and whereas communities must make every effort to pro- to promote programs and activities that create strong and thriving children and families, and whereas we acknowledge that we must work together as a community to increase awareness about child abuse and contribute to promoting the social and emotional well-being of children and families in a safe, stable, and nurturing environment, and whereas investments in prevention initiatives such as home visiting programs, family strengthening policies, economic support, and community-based child abuse prevention efforts are essential to build safer, healthier communities for children and families, and whereas prevention remains the best defense for our children and families. Signed this tenth day of April, two thousand twenty-five, Henry County Iowa.
I entertain a motion for this proclamation.
You have a motion.
Motion, a second. A second. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none. Thank you for the work that you do for our county.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda is a resolution to reappoint Clay Edwards to Southeast Iowa Regional Planning Commission. Resolution fourteen, date twenty twenty-five, whereas Henry County is a member of Southeast Iowa Regional Planning Commission, and whereas the county desires to prove its citizens with the tools to create, to create a growing business, and whereas the county is provided with the opportunity to appoint a representative to the Southeast Iowa Regional Planning Commission Review, Loan Review Committee in an effort to inform, to be informed about economic development activities and funds available for those activities, whereas the county intends to appoint Clay Edwards to the Southeast Iowa Regional Planning Commission Review, uh, Committee. It is here, it is to be resolved with the Board of Supervisors of Henry County, Iowa. The reappointment of Clay Edwards to the Southeast Iowa Regional, Regional Loan, revolving loan fund review committee, term to expire December thirtieth, two thousand twenty-seven. Is there a motion, uh, we'll have a motion meeting, a roll call on this one, as a resolution. Uh, roll call on it?
I'd make the motion.
Make the motion to adopt the resolution.
A second. You have a little call right there.
Peter?
Yes.
Lyne?
Yes.
Right.
Yes.
Thank you. We appreciate the advocacy of Darren with that, and continue to do for, uh, regional planning. Next on our agenda is other business and subcommittees. Any subcommittees?
Yeah, for the IED, it was Russ yesterday, had to leave unfortunately early enough, but we did get the opportunity to, to hear a little bit more about, uh, some of the activities that are going on, uh, environmental health was the one I really got to listen to, and Katie might be able to give us a little more update on, uh, some of those, uh, issues that happened yesterday, but, um, from a, from a Russ standpoint, we touched on a couple of issues that popped up, uh, but one of them was really involved in approving some, um, funds and some billing that has to go on a monthly basis to various entities that are, is in the Russ system. And if you're not familiar with that, the package, yeah, of course, Russ is the regional utility system that's based out on the west side of town, and about, uh, five, six of the counties are tied into Russ, and helps us to support, um, some of the utility systems that are required, and also the environmental stuff that Katie works with when it comes to septic and.
Well testing.
You belong?
Well testing is a big piece of our work.
Okay, yeah, thank you. And that was the one I had.
I had, uh, we had a dump agency discussion Friday yesterday, this is the, uh, committee that will be dissolved in kind of July one, since the state will be taking over all the mental health. Uh, for the most part, it was just, uh, approving everything that, uh, our committees have done far as budgeting and expenditures, and then the major portion of the meeting was discussion of how things are gonna go forward with adults and children, and, uh, their advisory committees and their discussion of that, uh, being a part of this since it started, uh, it's no longer with a county, um, situation, informed into a regional situation, and then reformed into another regional situation. The tenor of this meeting was sad, tell you the truth, because these people have put in so much effort and worked into the mental health regions, and they will no longer be part of it, and it just, uh, it was not an uplifting meeting, tell you the truth, not saying that things are gonna be bad for the future at all, I'm not saying that, it's just that everything they've done is no longer gonna be part of what they've done in the past, so, with that. With that, uh, our next thing is any public comments? Lee.
A few weeks ago, I read an article in the newspaper that reminded me of an old quote, and I'll share that with you, that goes something like this, "Ask not what your county can do for you, ask what you can do for your county." Now, a lot of you should remember that, but, uh, the article I was reading was about the chairman of the Lee County Board of Supervisors had a little sip of whiskey or something before he went to the board meeting, and he got caught, he betrayed the public trust, but the guy, to his credit, he wasn't selfish or greedy, he had the decency to do the honorable thing and resigned, put an end to it. And so, I look at what's going on here in this county with this lawsuit coming, and the county attorney, I wish he'd have stayed here a minute, but, um, he, he dismissed this, uh, uh, the charges against the crime family up there in Wayland, and I'll tell you, so many people have been hurt financially, it's terrible, worse than terrible, it's awful, and then he goes after this deputy for no valid reason, retaliation, revenge, whatever, I don't know, but he could overlook that, and then you two guys, you supervisors, voted no for funding, uh, outside counsel for this deputy for some reason, I don't know, but, the, the, so many of us around the county have thrown in to defend this deputy, he was doing his job, but, uh, I don't know, this, this county attorney thing is, is terrible, um, you know, it's like a secret organization or something, and that's the only thing I know that they're doing, is going after that deputy for some stupid reason, but anyhow, so getting back to this, uh, Lee County supervisor, had a little sip of whiskey, and I don't know how much of that goes on, I can't imagine it's an isolated case, but our lower-level employees are subject to an occasional drug test if there's a problem, and I'm thinking our upper-level, um, county employees ought to be subject to a periodical drug test.
Thank you. Anybody else? Hey, Colin? Hello?
I'd like to thank our speakers for coming here today, appreciate you ladies, good job to do, and all of us know, school bus drivers, all of us know teachers, institute teachers, law enforcement, space, they all, all are mandatory reporters. And so, if you see one, remind that individual, he's a mandatory reporter, if you see some people wrong with the child getting on that school bus in the morning, notice any unused bruises or whatever, please report it to the school nurse, please report it to the county. And there's other organizations also, BACA, it's bikers against child abuse, and they do a lot of work. Matter of fact, I helped go on a ride to deliver that one small child to East Green, it was up in North Liberty, about three hundred hours on motorcycles, poor child was beaten to death. That's all I have, thanks for coming.
I appreciated being able to, uh, see the, uh, budget, and also to be able to, uh, have comments, um, about it because of a taxpayer we've got to watch our budget too, so I thank you for that, and I also thank you supervisors because I know that you do extra hours, uh, with your job, and, uh, that is important, and it's commendable, so thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Neil, Neil, there, I'll end with one comment, I appreciate all of you coming today, we've had, but, other budget hearings, in my tenure as a supervisor, where we've had either one or zero people there, so thank you for coming, I feel this is probably the most important day of our year, right here, is what we do, so, and, but it's a culmination of all the other time put in to get to this point, so thank you all for coming. With that, motion to adjourn?
You have a motion to adjourn.
A second, you have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, you are adjourned.